Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening. It's December 5th and we call to order and do a roll call vote.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dickinson. Councilmember Kern. Councilmember Hefner.
Right on time. Amen to that. All right. First, we have, as I think most of you saw, an amended agenda and which I believe is posted. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next is public comments and items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. This is an opportunity for people to comment on things that may not be on the agenda tonight, but they want us to think about or talk about. You get three minutes to come up, identify yourself and where you're from, and speak on whatever that is. We cannot, because there are items not on the agenda, can't respond to you. So it may seem like we're just ignoring you. We're not ignoring you. It's just part of the public process that we can't respond. We'll take those comments into consideration and we'll respond as appropriate. The second thing is, we have on the agenda tonight, an item which is Resolution Number 80, Series 2023, a resolution approving the Redtail Ridge filing number one preliminary subdivision plat, which staff has requested a continuance, but it is still on the agenda. So we are not going to be taking any comments on that item during this meeting. What we will be doing is, once we get there, is we'll be taking a vote, or presumably somebody will move and we'll take a vote on whether we continue that until later, if staff has requested, or we don't. But we're not going to take any public comment now. The important part about that is that if any of you are here for that, or have been told that you can make comments tonight on that, you can't, but you can bring those comments on the 16th of January if we approve the motion. But we'll get to that in a bit. But I wanted to say that as a preliminary to this particular item. And a number of people have said they wanted to speak on that, and we are not going to be taking that during public comment right now. Cynthia Corn. I think, no. This one is one of those, I'm sorry, I didn't read all the way down to the bottom. Okay. That's right, you have two different pieces, don't you? If you could come and speak about the first one, then we'll keep the Redtail Ridge one for later. Go ahead.
Dear Mayor, council members, members of the community, my name's Cynthia Corn. I live at 438 Jefferson Avenue in Ward Three. I also have a property in Ward One, so it's, you know, the opening in the Ward One role is important as well. What I'd like to comment on tonight is City Manager Durbin. The community update came out today, I got, or maybe over the last couple days, and he did an article at the front. So I just want to say, City Manager Durbin, I appreciate what you're doing. You've brought in increasing visibility to the role. There's been a lot of community feedback about increasing communications with the community in advance of activity happening. If staff had not taken feedback from when the tree was going to come down at 88th and quickly pivoted from that to, then there was communication around via Appia and the medians, but then you put the communication out on the new diet on via Appia with time for the public to comment. I actually consider that to be a huge success, that the notice was given, the communication was given in advance so people could comment. So thank you. I think everybody got to weigh in and council got to respond. I also wanted to thank you for the hiring you've done and also supporting existing staff. It's impressive, the staff, what's happening, at least from the community view. And there is lots of community input. And if you haven't, if people haven't read the message, it's concise, but his message is spot on with the heavy lift that you've often, well, a few times this last year, council has heard me express my appreciation to council for all the things that are handled by council, are handled by city staff, and yet there's so many complaints and the things that divide us often come to this group. So I encourage everyone to read his note. On that note, I do want to also bring up support for Community Planning Director Zakaro. And he's had, what, four different bosses in a few years? And the code specifically, as a home rule charter thing, and when we have a new development come to the city, the first thing a developer is supposed to do is approach the city manager. It doesn't say, "or they're designee." So I think this is something we really need to think about. I think that was written for a reason, that the city manager oversees public works, finance, community development, other things. So when large developments come through, it shouldn't be delegated to the next line staff. Now, would I have expected City Manager Durbin to do this in the past? Not necessarily, because he was new in his role. But now you've been a couple of years in, two and a half. So anyway, I'm out of time on that, but hopefully the message comes across loud and clear. Keep up the great work. I see, I see what you and your team are doing, so thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we've got, it's like Annie, and this item is on Redtail Ridge, so I'm gonna put that in that group that I talked about at the beginning. Catherine Smith has signed up for items not on the agenda, as long as it's not Redtail Ridge preliminary plat. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I wanted to share with you some takeaways that I have about our application process, and particularly in the context of real estate development in the city. And I have five changes that I would like to see made to Lewisville's municipal code. One is a temporary change, and four are permanent changes that I'm recommending. The first one really could be any part of the city code, but I feel like people who are part of the fire survivors group are still somehow invisible. And in particular, I think the community feels that we're not necessarily taking into account the impact of development on a community where they've already got a lot of ongoing construction. And so what I would like to see is the city code changed so that from this point forward for the next, say, two to three years, developers have to file a statement that discusses what they're going to do to mitigate the impact of their development on these communities that are still working on rebuilding. So I'm talking about communities that are next to a planned development of significant size. The next thing I like to talk about is efficiency and the use of staff resources, which are always limited in a government. And when we look at what's happened here with the fire and the emergency, I think the city staff are just really stretched so thinly that I feel that we should explicitly say that we're not going to ask our staff to put together proposals that are incomplete and forward those onto city council. I just don't think that's a good use of council's time or staff's time. The next issue has to do with vague delegations, the authority of the council, and delegations to staff. Examples of the kind of things that I'm concerned about are circumstances where the city council just says to staff, "You handle that." I feel that a lot of the decisions that come to city council are of significance, that if the council is going to do a delegation, then I think it needs to be very specific, and there should be no question about what it is that's been delegated to council. I'm seeing actions come before council where the recommendation is to let lower-level staff just handle an issue. And I don't think that's proper when the code has given the responsibility to the council. The other thing that I am just very concerned about is the way the notice process works in the city when you have significant and complex land development applications. I think the code should be modified to require that every application that involves more than 5% of the land in the city, that there should be a pre-publication requirement on Lewisville's website, where the full contents of the application, the staff analysis and recommendation should be fully available to the public 14 days before any city council meeting on that development. And the last thing has to do with playing nice in the sandbox. We're part of a community. There is the Northwest Parkway, there's the City of Brunefield, there's the City of Lafayette, there's the counties. We play with a lot of other people. I think that when we get correspondence from them, that asks us to play nicely with them, that we should do that. We should honor their requests. I think we need to be mindful that we have a lot of complex relationships here, and we don't want to compromise those relationships. So I urge you.
The time has kind of run out. I'm gonna try to ask you to finish.
You're gonna be the tough guy. Got it.
I'm gonna be, well, I'm gonna try to enforce the rule, just the way that everybody did.
Chris, we got it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, let's see. Tamar Krantz. An item not on the agenda?
Yes. I'm sorry. I hope that Councilmember Dickinson and Councilmember Kern, if you're listening, that you feel better soon. I wanted to just clarify something about the actual agenda and not talk about Redtail Ridge, but talk about the procedure. The item is on the agenda, and I know from how hard it was for me to first come up here and talk, and I see you going through cards, and some of those people may have never come to council before, may have never spoken up, and it's not on the agenda, but I think that it's okay to discuss the continuance. Staff is recommending a continuance to a date certain, and some folks may want to recommend a continuance. I saw some of the letters. People might want to have a continuance until the Ward One council seat is filled. I'm not sure when that's going to happen, but regarding the date for the continuance, I feel like you should allow people to speak, especially people who've come here for the first time and just want to get up on the microphone if they have something to say about that. I think it is an item they could speak about. I want to make sure they have the turn to speak about that right before that agenda comes up for the continuance. You can't talk about the content of it. I understand what you're saying, because it's going to be at a future agenda, but the actual continuance, I hope that you can allow some discussion about the procedure.
I'll ask, I'll actually ask the city attorney. I think that's, I think that's okay. I know that that's a problem. When it comes up, we, but.
Right. I mean, I can tell you now, since the topic's been raised, that whether or not to continue the public hearing is a council decision, that's not, you don't hold a hearing on whether to continue a hearing. You don't take public comment typically for an item like that, because it is literally just the agenda for council.
Okay. Thank you.
I really appreciate you answering that, and I think that I would encourage you to take the comments then during comments not on agenda, if, rather than wait till that agenda item, so that people who have questions or comments regarding this procedure, just like I did, could have them clarified, or at least tell you what they're thinking. It's always hard for me to come up, and I saw some new faces, so I don't even know what they're here for, but I just saw you shuffling cards. And then regarding the ward and commission appointments, I don't feel like a lot of, we got a lot of information during that last hearing, and I'm hoping that you council members can elaborate a little more, and I always just wanted to, I think that's, will I be able to speak on that later?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
But I appreciate your being ready to do that. Let's see, if we got any more here. Yes, Sinali Marlin? Did I pronounce that right?
Is it possible that I can have Sean Howe go first? We're both here for the same reason. We're both neighbors, and I would like to go after her if possible.
Yeah, yeah, we can have Sean come first. She's got a card in here, too.
Thanks. It'll just facilitate things, I think, because I have the details of what happened.
Can you state your name and your location?
Yep. I'm Sean Howe, and I live at 845 Trail Ridge Drive in Lewisville, and I'm here this evening to express some concern about work being done in the Marshall Fire Zone, specifically by certain contractors. We are fire survivors, and we were lucky enough to finish our rebuild and return home in late August. As you know, this was a long journey that was difficult, both emotionally and financially. I'd like to first say thank you to council and city staff for everything you have done to make our path home quicker and easier. I know that you have worked countless hours to help our community recover, and it is appreciated more than I can convey in simple words. On October 25th, my children and I were sitting in our new home when we heard a very strange loud noise course through our house. It was immediately followed by a series of loud pops, which sounded like every one of our light bulbs was exploding, and then all of our smoke alarms started blaring, "Fire, fire, fire." You can kind of imagine how that felt. We all exited the home. I looked to my left to the neighbor's house to try and figure out what was going on, and the cable box on the side of her house was engulfed in flames. So I ran into her front door and yelled, "Sinali, call 911, your house is on fire." And she was already on the phone with 911. Thank you to the first responders. We had seven trucks from three different departments in under five minutes. What had happened is a contractor was boring under the street. They wrapped the primary electrical line, they then wrapped the coaxial line, they then wrapped the secondary electrical line, and sent an enormous power surge back through our house, our brand-new house. They did $3,000 worth of damage. They destroyed ceiling fans, they destroyed appliances, microwaves, electric fence, the cable line, all things which we've had to have repaired. The first thing that this contractor did after this happened is remove the license plates from their truck. Okay? It's on video. So we're lucky no one was killed. It was, there was a big fireball that came out of the ground. We're lucky no one was injured. This company continues to work in our community. Their truck is parked at the end of my driveway right now, because they're going to bore under my driveway tomorrow. They have informed me that they are not responsible, and they are not going to pay for the damages that they caused to my property, because that would be admitting liability. I have documentation from Excell Energy's chief investigator that they were indeed at fault, but this does me little to no good. So my concerns are this, we have, oh.
Finish up.
Yeah, yeah. So in any case, I was here to see if there's anything that the city can do to help hold contractors accountable when they destroy private property or practice unsafe situations. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sinali Marlin. I live at 847 Trail Ridge Drive. We moved into our new rebuild in end of July, and like Sean, I'm super thankful to the city for helping us get there as fast as we could. You can imagine the trauma and the stress that went through my head when at 5:00 PM on October 25th, Sean came running over to say there was a fire on the side of my house. My husband went out, and he said that the electrical boxes were humming, probably because they were sending 440 volts, because of that issue with Advanced Underground. And I'm just so thankful that when he was turning off the main breakers in our house and Sean's house, that nobody got hurt, because I can't even imagine what that would have been like. Since then, Advanced Underground, which is the drilling contractor, subcontractor for Poly, who's subcontracting for Lumen Century Link, came by, and we had a conversation on Sean's front porch the next day, and they said, "Send us your damages," because at that point, we'd inventoried our loss, and like Sean, we had $4,500 of damaged appliances in our house. We have since ordered new replacements, but now we have more electricians coming in to install. And they told us that they would pay for all of the damages, no problem. They were so sorry about all the trauma and the stress. We submitted all the receipts. We didn't hear back from them. It's been two weeks. Subsequently, Raphael, the contractor manager for Advanced Underground, stopped by my house on Friday. Actually, it was Wednesday, and he said he would pay us by Friday, because we had $4,500, and Sean, I think, mentioned the $3,000. But then he also asked me if Excell said whether we had been paid, would I could just say no, because otherwise they would admit that they were at fault. So he was basically telling me that he could write me a check, that their insurance would write me a check for our damages, but that if someone asked me if we were paid, I was going to say no. And when I refused to do that, because that sounded super shady, he left, and then we got a note back from him saying, "Sorry, they're not at fault. They have not received anything from Excell saying they were at fault." And that is just not true. Excell Energy, the chief investigator, sent us an email with pictures saying that Vanguard had located correctly, that these guys messed up. They messed up the night before when we had lost power, but it came right back, and the next day, they sent 440 volts to my new house. So I would just like to know if the city of Lewisville can do anything to help us out here. I don't know what that would, what shape or form that would take, but my key concern is they're going to be finished, you know, drilling. I don't know how long that contract lasts, and they're going to move on. And so this company needs to be held accountable for the damage. They are now denying that they did anything, but this could have been far worse than $4,500 of damage. This could have actually been loss of life. Thank you.
This one is on boards and commissions, which is already an agenda item, so.
I have another one. I pooled my time with Jan Prokop. Yeah.
Okey-dokey.
Sherri Summer, Lewisville. I also want to speak about democratic process, and I'm going to refer to Redtail Ridge, but not as the agenda item. I'm going to refer to the effect that the events of the last couple of weeks have had on people. I want to talk about democratic process, and I want to talk about hope. Now, when I was elected, when I was campaigning for mayor, and I was not elected, but before that, I was imagining in my mind, okay, if I lose, this is the scenario, and if I win, this is the scenario. And my dreams, if I won, were to be, to upset people as little as possible, to follow process. This was my real, I was like, oh, I'd love to do this, to follow process so well and so transparently that we would really have a good rapport with the residents of Lewisville. And I'm sorry that didn't happen, and I'm really sorry about the events of the last week, because they've been very, very upsetting. I can tell you, before I left home, my blood pressure was 145 over 98. This has been very, very upsetting to have this sprung on me, and I'm going to go home and rest, and hopefully not do too much more damage to myself. But it's been upsetting because process was ignored. We're not going to go into the details. Our resident group sprang into action when we found out that this very little noticed agenda item would be on the agenda this week. We created a flyer, we raised money, we delivered 3,000 flyers. I delivered 600 myself, which was pretty painful, because I have plantar fasciitis, but I was like, you know what, this is not right. So this is the impact decisions have on people. People have shown up, and I hope that you read the cards of the people who want to speak. People have carved out time, they've made a place for this in their lives. And decisions made by a few people should not be a health hazard for residents, which they kind of are at the moment. But I want to speak also about hope, and I want to speak about peace, because we can choose how we act, we don't have to react, we can respond, and that's, even though I'm upset. And that's, even though I'm upset, my choice is to respond, and I want to, I hope that we can all respond in these kind of situations. I campaigned. I met so many good residents. They're still so good. They still love our town. We still have a wonderful town. We still have a great staff. Nothing about any of those things has changed. We have reason for hope. We have, we have the right to ask for process to be followed so that we don't have to get so upset. We, we, what's really encourages me is that we are a very diverse group of people. We come from various religions, cultures, ethnic backgrounds. We're very different, but we have the same values. And that is huge in this day and age. That is precious. And so I want to, like, just sort of help us focus a little on hope and to center. Whatever our backgrounds are, whatever our face, whatever our cultures, wherever we're from, I want to take a moment of silence where we can center ourselves and, and draw on those sources of strength that uplift us, and remember that we are surrounded by wonderful people in this town. Things are not falling apart. They just seem to be. I'd like to say a few words from my faith, the Christian faith. Light has shone in the darkness, and the darkness has not overcome it. Okay, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all we have cards from. Is there anybody online who has a comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, anybody else here who has a comment on an item not on the agenda? All right. Let's move to the consent agenda. Do we, um, have a motion concerning the consent agenda?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Uh, council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Yes, Councilmember Fay.
Thank you, yes. Um, I just want to mention to anyone here or watching at home that there will be the first Ward Two, uh, meeting, public meeting. Councilmember Judy Kern and I decided that it was time. COVID's over, I hope. Um, the fire is pretty well taken care of, not entirely. But we would like to find out what is on the minds of all of the Ward Two residents. So this meeting will be at 6:30 on Wednesday, December 13th, at the senior center or the rec center. I'm not, I think it's in, going to be in the senior center, um, at the rec center. So, uh, anybody is welcome to come, but we're particularly interested in how the members of Ward Two are thinking about different issues. Thank you.
Ed, uh, Juan, I was in a Metro Mayor's conference yesterday, a call, um, and, which is a new thing for me, but there were a couple of items, nothing definitive, but one item has to do with some interest in changing, um, the governance structure of R T D, which is currently apparently 15 members, which is a lot of cats to herd. And they're talking about shrinking that to maybe seven to nine. I thought that was sort of interesting. Nothing more than that. To the extent anybody is interested in having input into that, I think the group was, uh, consistent in thinking that it would be good to have some input in advance of the legislative session because I think the legislative session will help to determine that. Another thing, which we haven't talked too much about, every time we talk about rail, uh, through Lewisville, people smirk. I'm not going to comment on anybody in the audience right now, um, and what they're, uh, uh, what's on their face. But I, I think we have all heard, gee, it's going to be here, and it's going to be there, and it's going to be 2042, and maybe, uh, and so forth. But there, there is some ferment right now. And, um, I think the various, there are various routes under consideration. There is a potential, um, uh, ballot issue next year that may come forward. All of this is not, uh, congealed yet. But just, um, keep in mind, there's, there certainly is a website for the, uh, the district that has been created, uh, on the Front Range at the request of the legislature, and has a general manager who's kind of working on these issues, working with a lot of different communities. We'll see how things go there, but the, one of the things I found interesting is there are several different routes. And the routes, the closer they come to us, the more opposition they have from the southern members of Metro Mayor's Conference. So that'll be pretty interesting to see, um, how that goes. But I just wanted to report on that. Anything else? Okay. Uh, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing further at the moment.
All right. We will move then to the regular business. Um, as I said before, the first item on the agenda is Resolution Number 80, Series 2023, a resolution approving Redtail Ridge filing number one preliminary subdivision plat. Um, we have two council members tonight who are out with COVID, which is why it's just a cozy group of the four of us here. And, um, so that's why staff, as I understand it, has, um, has recommended that we continue this item. But before we do that, um, any disclosures?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not getting into the substance, but, but when we do, I'll be recusing myself due to a conflict of interest.
Okay. Um, city attorney, would it be appropriate for him to do that now, or can he vote on the motion?
I think now is fine. Yes.
Now is fine for?
Now is fine. I mean, I understand that your recusal is just for all matters related to this property. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. So I, should I not vote on, on postponing the agenda item?
Correct, yeah.
Got it.
Okay. And then, you have to leave. We're going to boot you out for a little bit. This is a process which is provided for in the, uh, ordinances. When somebody has a potential conflict of interest, which, as I understand it, has to do with, uh, the council members' work, and, uh, potential parties to the, the matter at hand. He's absenting himself. We have to go through kind of this, may seem like a ritual. It's a really important ritual to make sure that he doesn't participate in, uh, in this. And so that's what he has just done. So, uh, in line with, uh, um, request or the, um, recommendation of staff, do we have a motion?
So Mayor.
Oh, I've got to open the public hearing, don't I?
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing now. Do we have a motion to continue Resolution Number 74?
Resolution Number 80. Resolution Number 80?
Excuse me. Resolution Number 80, Series 2023, a resolution approving Redtail Ridge filing number one, preliminary subdivision plat to a date certain, which would be June, January 16th at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Sorry, can we ask questions or propose something different?
Need a second first.
Okay. We need a second first. Second.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that's January 16, 2024.
Yes. Thanks.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember. Hamlington, do you have a question?
Question, yeah. Um, so I actually have two questions, and stop me if I can't go further with one of them. The first one is, though, is there a reason why we can't wait till the Ward One vacancy is filled? If we're talking about applications coming in mid-January and hopefully making a decision by the end of January, given the importance of this agenda item, is waiting a little bit longer an option?
I think the answer to that, at least from my perspective, and I'm glad to hear, um, uh, Councilmember Fahey weigh in on this. But from my perspective, today was supposed to be today to hear this. And people, as, um, I think was said a little bit ago, uh, had come here, I think, expecting to give, uh, comments. At least some of them probably didn't hear that the, the matter was recommended to be continued. And I appreciate the inconvenience of that. It just sort of couldn't, couldn't be helped to have folks who, uh, just came down with COVID-19. But, um, I think the idea is, you know, we, we move forward as we can with items that come up, um, from, you know, meeting to meeting. And, um, we will have put this off another month. And my prediction is that we will probably not finish that item on the 16th of January. We'll start the public hearing, but my, my prediction, I think it's not, uh, a very unreasonable one. I think it's a pretty reasonable one, that we're only going to be continuing, um, we'll probably continue that hearing at the end of the day. So it's not, we won't be, in all likelihood, voting on anything that day. And starting to get into the process is, um, you know, it's, it's sort of what we did. I remember, let me kind of put it this way. I remember one time when we, I don't know that we faced the same issue, but, uh, a former mayor, Stolzman, um, was facing as mayor an issue about, do we put something over? Because somebody was sick. Um, one person was sick, one meeting, and there was some sense that, gee, that person's going to miss everything. And I remember her saying, you know, it's, that's a tough thing, but we got to keep moving on the matters before us. So I think that's the reason why we go ahead with things, because we just do. But, you know, I'm, I'm glad to, I mean, I presume because you're raising it, you have a point of view.
Yeah, I mean, from where I'm coming from, we're already going to be short a council member and a vote because of the recusal. Then being short with Ward One as well. I think you bring up a good point, that the conversation will likely continue beyond this date, which to me is actually all the more reason, um, if it's just a couple of weeks or a month, to wait till that Ward One council member is, um, sworn in so that we can have as, as many seats as possible filled on the dais, um, for this conversation. And I fully acknowledge and appreciate the example from the prior mayor that sometimes we don't have full attendance. But I think this is one of those items that has such a huge impact on our community that it, it's, it's worth a, a month, um, to make sure that everyone's represented, um, to the fullest extent of possible. And I don't know if we have, um, you know, any idea about the date to be sworn in. I know we talked about application and, and interviews, um, but, but I would like to seriously consider this given the gravity of the item, if possible.
Okay. Councilmember Fay?
I have a question for the city attorney. If the new council member is not appointed or sworn in yet on the 16th, they won't hear the presentation, they won't be participating. Can they then vote on the subsequent meeting about this topic, having not heard or participated in the first half?
They would be able to vote if they watched the video because then they would have the same evidence as the rest of the council members. So if the first part of the hearing is held, and, and I'm trying to recall when Redtail Ridge was before the council previously, I think it was three meetings worth of public hearings. So just assuming that this is going to take more than one meeting, there could be other council members who miss a meeting also in there. And when it comes time to vote, any council member who hasn't received all of the evidence will not be able to vote. But anybody who has missed a session of the city council public hearing can watch the video and then be able to vote because then they will have the same evidence as the rest of the council members.
Okay, thank you.
You raise a really good point, Councilmember Hamlington. I, I think, you know, one of the things that I'm sort of feeling heavier than I did a few weeks ago when I was a council member and not a mayor, is the, uh, some of the weight of the, um, keeping processes moving, if you will, and being orderly about them. And the Redtail Ridge, um, application in, well, this is one application, but it has, it's a very, very large, um, set of the issues, which comes before council multiple times. It has. It's come before us in different forms. This is a different forum. It's a preliminary plat. It's not the final plat. It's not a GDP amendment. It's not, you know, it, it's a different animal. And I guess, uh, my, one of my concerns might be, you know, the impact of a decision to put off this, um, uh, the, the beginning of the hearing until, I don't know, first or second week in February at the earliest. Delays the process three, two months fully. It also, uh, you know, how's that going to affect the process in the future? Maybe not, maybe not at all. Maybe this is an unusual and distinguishable event. But the one thing that we can't continue to do, I think generally, is if somebody's out or, um, whatnot, just to, to put things over because we don't have exactly the conditions that, um, everybody would like. It's just the nature of our decision-making. I don't know, um, you know, city attorney, if that even raises any legal issues or if that's just sort of a policy issue we have to deal with.
Right. It's not, it's not a legal question, other than, um, the question that Councilmember Fahey asked about who can vote when it comes time to make a decision. And the only council members who can vote are council members who have received all of the evidence from the entire public hearing.
Let me ask a question of the, uh, city manager. Can you remind us of the timetable for, um, taking applications and then interviewing, uh, new candidates, and then finally, um, seating them?
Oh, I, this, the application should be available in the next few days. Uh, I believe we're looking at a deadline in, um, of January 16th, with interviews on January 31st, with the hopes, assuming you come to a conclusion, that we depoint on February 6th.
That's when they would be sworn in? Well, you know, I, I don't know if there anybody has any more response to that. I, you know, I also, I recognize that this is, um, this is a huge issue. It's been a huge issue. I remember it was a huge issue, and, I mean, each little piece of it is a big issue for, for a lot of people, and it's perceived that way. And I remember 2021, when I was campaigning, um, and everybody wanted to talk about that issue, and I couldn't talk about that issue. because quasi-judicial at the time when I was running. And it was really, which is about as painful as it gets when you're running for office, is not to be able to talk about something. But I realize how important it is to people. And so I don't know that I have any objection. I think it's part of my job to try to keep things moving. And that sounds, that may sound like, well, you know, that's maybe a, just a second, that it's form over substance. It really, it really isn't designed to be that. It's just what I got to do, just like I have to keep an eye on the clock. But I think, I take your point, Councilmember Hamlington, to take it seriously. I wanted to hear what everybody else said. And I, Councilmember Fahey, did you have something to add?
I just want to mention that since there are five Tuesdays in January, there won't be a meeting on the 30th, is that correct?
That would be the night for Ward 1 interviews.
For the interviews, right. And so the new council member would be appointed on the 6th of February, which means that they would only miss, well, they would only miss the first presentation on the Redtail Ridge issue. And then they'd be present for the second one.
So we're proposing moving this to the 16th of January?
I don't know, is that?
Is that what's on the table?
That's the motion that's on the table.
That's the motion. So it's the 16th and the 23rd are meetings that would be?
The 23rd is a study session. We're going to, it will not be a regular meeting for regular items.
Okay, so the next, the next, let me ask a question, another question, which is, when would be the next meeting that would be possible?
February 6th.
February 6th, same day that the person gets sworn in. So what we're talking about really is roughly three weeks? Yes?
And one comment that I would make is that, you know, past performance is no guarantee of future results. It could be that the Redtail Ridge, all of the evidence is received on January 16th. So I don't want to unfairly presume that this is going to take several sessions because it did last time. Just offer that for your consideration.
I appreciate that. That's a good lawyerly response, I think, too. But, but it is, it is a possibility, I suppose, that we could get all done that day. And then the new person wouldn't have an opportunity, which I think is your point. So friendly amendment to the motion, which...
Is that the best process to go about for this?
Yes.
Would be, yeah. Would be to move the date certain on the motion to continue Resolution 80 Series 2023, a resolution approving Redtail Ridge filing number one preliminary subdivision plat to February 6th meeting. Do you accept that?
I think the February, the January 16th meeting is delaying it long enough. And, and the new council member can watch that first meeting. I, I assume it won't go three meetings, but I'm, would be surprised if it didn't go two.
Okay, then we'll proceed to roll call. I think on the original motion.
Can we read it again?
Yes, it's, the original motion was to continue the hearing on Resolution Number 80 Series 2023, a resolution approving the Redtail Ridge filing number one preliminary subdivision plat to January 16th, 2024.
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM, on the dot. Should we take a roll call?
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamlington?
No.
Mayor Lay?
No. So I'm going to propose a substitute, actually, I'm going to propose a substitute motion.
It's just a new motion at this point.
It's a new motion. All right, I'm going to propose a motion that we approve Resolution Number 80 Series 2023, a resolution approving the Redtail Ridge filing number one.
Wait, Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't, your motion is to approve the resolution?
Excuse me.
To continue the public hearing?
To continue, sorry. Let me just take a minute. I move to continue the hearing, the public hearing, on Resolution Number 80 Series 2023, a resolution approving the Redtail Ridge filing number one preliminary subdivision plat until February 6th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Hamlington?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes. No, not close to public hearing, because we're just leaving it open. All right. Okay, so next item, upper discussion, direction, action. Let's go get, did you get him? Okay. And if we can take about a minute for him to come in and for me to get some more water. So why don't we go?
Sorry.
The next item, as I mentioned, is discussion, direction, action, committee recommendations of applicants to appoint or interview for board and commission vacancies. Just to open this one up, I'm going to ask staff to present, but I wanted to say one thing in advance of this. The way we have done this process in the last couple of years, and I swear, in nine years of doing this, we've done it about every way possible. And the one thing I can be assured of every time is that we never quite like exactly the way we do it. That's usually, but not completely. And that's, I think, partly because we're trying to improve it each time. People can decide whether that's the case. But what, what we did was the mayor, Mayor Maloney at the time, appointed two of our own. And I think all of us agreed to that. It wasn't voted upon, but we agreed that Councilmember Hefner, Councilmember Hamlington would meet and go through the applications. And I have the book. That is how many people, if you look at the notebook of, that's like two inches thick of people, wonderful people, who came forward and submitted applications for board and commission positions, to cull through those and make some recommendations. Not choices, not decisions, just simply recommendations to us based on their initial review. And, but, you know, we can talk about that in a minute. But why don't we give it to Meredith for a staff presentation?
I think you stole all my thunder.
I didn't mean to, I never mean to steal your thunder. Sorry about that.
As the mayor noted, in December, the city council appointed council members Hamlington and Hefner to review the application process, or the applications we received. They have done that. And in your packet is a list of recommendations that includes lists of people to appoint without an interview and a list of people to interview next week. I will say there was an error on my part in the packet that Jennifer Hunt's application was in the packet, but was not included on the spreadsheet. So it may not have been included in all of you when you were looking at them. I'll let them speak to this, but I believe council members Hamlington and Hefner, would like to include her on the list of people to interview for the planning commission. So that's one change to what you have in your packet. Interviews are scheduled for Monday and Tuesday of next week. And just as this is a recommendation, you guys can add more people to interview or change people to interview, just so you have an idea of what we're looking at. Currently, there's 20 people on the list to interview. We would probably divide it up evenly, 10 per night. If you wanted to add more, we could go as many as 30 people, so 15 people each night. Or we could add an additional night if you wanted to include additional people to interview. Although I will say, apparently Wednesday night is now out because Ward 2 is having a meeting that night. So we can have that conversation if need be. But again, this, as the mayor noted, this is a recommendation. You guys can change, add, move, whatever you want to do on the list. Interviews would take place next week. And the actual appointments would take place at the December 19th meeting. Those appointments would start in January. And then any, any positions that were still open after this process, we will re-advertise in January to try and get more people to interview or to appoint. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And we can do whatever you guys want to do with this list.
Good. I wanted to maybe address one point, which was the notice. Just an error on the notice. There was no decision made that night. So there's, there's not much of a, anything more to be said about that tonight. But I, what I wanted to do was to give first a chance for council members Hamlington and Hefner to weigh in, any, any comments they have about candidates or process or whatever.
Yeah, thank you. First, I, I think I can speak for both of us when I say that not only were there an extraordinary number of applications, as you can see from the mayor's book, but also the, the level of enthusiasm and quality of application and commitment from members of the community is just, you know. I was blown away in just, just reading about all the sort of, the interesting sorts of people who live here and want to donate their, their free time to the city and making the city a better place is really inspiring in so many ways. For better or for worse, our task was to take that big stack and try and narrow it down to a number of interviews that we can do in two nights. And I think Barbara and I tried to approach that in, as an objective of a way as possible by scoring each application using the same criteria and then comparing scores and generating recommendations based on that. So we really tried to do it in a way that was as objective as possible and fair both to folks who are applying for reappointment as well as new applicants who are expressing interest. None of the choices were easy. You know, in every case where there are applicants who didn't end up, at least on our list, have recommended interviews, those were hard choices that reflect the need to have a manageable number of interviews. I think in a, in a world with unlimited time and resources, we would have really loved to meet everyone and talk to, talk to everyone and get to know them. So those are sort of my thoughts on the process. Barbara, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Very well put, Councilmember Hefner, thank you. I too was energized by reading these applications. I was reading them over what was Thanksgiving break, sitting at the table with my cup of coffee every morning. And I'm just so honored to be sitting up here representing such an engaged community. And I will extend a personal invitation to anyone who is ultimately not chosen to serve on a board. I hope you're still interested in serving your community. And I'm happy to sit down with you and have conversations about what those opportunities could look like, because you are an amazing bunch. And it was a very, very difficult decision. I was overwhelmed by the passion, by the qualifications of the individuals who applied. So I wanted to extend that offer if I didn't truly mean it. I will reiterate our attempt to go about this in a way that's as structured as possible. I will also comment on the meeting that we had where we made the list on the 27th, I believe, of November. The intent was to give the list to councils so we could have a robust discussion up here today. And that was the, the assumption that we were operating on. So I hope we can have that conversation tonight. And I'm looking forward to hearing what my fellow council members have to say about all you phenomenal citizens looking to engage in your community. So thank you for that.
Probably should frame this a little bit in terms of, when you're talking about decisions, you mean decisions about your own recommendations to council, right?
Yes, decisions on recommendations. We did not vote on appointments.
To, to let people understand about how we, how we're doing this, there's the culling part, which was done. And then there is tonight, which is basically deciding how we're going to proceed. Are we going to, are we going to add people to the interview list? Are we going to take some off? Are we going to, you know, how are we going to do that? We'll have the interviews. And then we will come back and make a recommendation as to all of the candidates and every position we can. Then, we already know that some of the boards and commissions didn't have any candidates apply. And what we have typically done is, usually in January, Meredith, we've tried to go back to the well, if you will, and see if people, maybe some of the people who weren't selected are willing to apply and serve on other committees or boards and commissions. And that's kind of how we roll, or at least we have. We used to. I was here for the year where we interviewed everyone for everything. And that was ludicrous, I can tell you that. Because we ended up having like seven-minute interviews, which isn't fair to the candidates if we really don't think they're, they're going to be selected at all because of something and that they didn't understand what the board or commission was even about, or something like that. It's not fair to the people who are ready, prepared and submitted really good applications. It's not fair to the public. It's, you know, we, this is what we do. So I have less, you know, perhaps empathy for the council members. But I probably should have more empathy for council members, because we do spend a lot of time on it. But I, that's kind of how the process works, just so you know. It's, we're not making any decisions specifically tonight. What we're trying to do is just figure out whether we approve of the recommendations or whether we have some changes. So why don't we, do you, because you were the ones that came up with the recommendations initially, do you all have changes in the recommendations that you've made?
The only change I think we're making to what's in the packet is, as the city clerk mentioned, adding Jennifer Hunt to the list of interviews or recommended interviews for planning commissions. And Jennifer, if you're here or listening, apologies that we overlooked that in our, in our first cut.
To make it clear, her application was in, is in the list. It just didn't show up on the list that they were looking at. So it was a pretty reasonable oversight, to be honest. Go ahead, yeah.
Just to make one comment on that addition, thank you. We requested that she be added to the list of interviews. We requested that she be added to the list of interviews, not because of the oversight, but because when we put the ratings in the rubric, she did score as a high applicant worth interviewing in this process.
Okay. And I'm doing this slightly out of order, but I wanted to make sure to get those comments in. Let's take public comment now, unless there's any questions for the city clerk. Okay. And I think there were at least two. Sheri Summer, first one. Come on up.
Sheri Summer. So, I had the privilege of listening in or sitting in on the pre-selection process, and I really want to thank Councilmember Hamilton and Hefner for their great work that they did. You did a wonderful job leading that meeting, and it was very inspirational to me to feel like your leadership was so wonderful, and I'm sorry you had COVID, but I know you contributed as well, so thank you also. Good job. I do want to make one comment. Now, we've talked about lots of different ways to approach this, but one thing that has really stuck out to me consistently over several years is that we have interviewed everybody who is qualified for the planning commission. And actually, in this iteration, it looks to me like two people who are currently on the commission were reappointed or were recommended to be reappointed, and then there was a new person. It was not quite 100% clear to me why these choices were made. And I think what has been done in the past, which I think is really good for transparency and just for, because this is very, very, planning commission's very, very important, is that they interviewed everybody who was qualified. And maybe I just said that, but anyway. So, I really would hope that you would do that. And yes, we do need to keep processes moving, but you know, they say things can be good, cheap, and fast, and you know, choose to. And in some cases, you don't want to have it fast and cheap. This is very important, and so I'd like to respectfully ask that the planning commission, that you wouldn't interview all qualified applicants, that will only add three people to your night, and I think it will give the public a lot of ease. Thank you very much.
Josh Cooperman.
Josh Cooperman, I live in Lewisville. The city received, I guess, 16 applications for the five open seats on the planning commission. One of these applications came from Julia Klein. After city council's initial consideration of applications, Julia Klein was not recommended for an interview. I recommend that city council reconsider this decision for the following reasons. Julia is a PhD physicist like myself, though in a much different subfield. She works for a quantum computing company in Broomfield. She received an outstanding undergraduate education at Williams College like myself, though it did not overlap. The skills acquired through such training would serve her very well on the planning commission. Moreover, Julia would broaden the backgrounds, experiences, and perspectives represented on the planning commission. Given city council's current recommendations, there would be at most two women, I guess now three women, on the seven-member commission, and the commission's average age looks set to increase. Julia would bring the background, experience, and perspectives of a young woman renting an apartment in Lewisville. Housing for this segment of the population is a particular challenge in Lewisville. As the city moves forward with implementation of its housing plan, a perspective like Julia's will prove invaluable on the planning commission. For the record, I did not know that Julia was applying for a position on the planning commission. I view her decision to apply as demonstrating her commitment to the city that she recently made her home. Thank you.
Tamara Krantz, did you have, no, okay. Let's look online. It looks like, let's say, Maxine Most. Maxine, are you there?
Yes, whoops. Yes, thank you. I just have two questions. And I, Maxine Most, 640 West Linden Street, Lewisville. I was very involved in making some updates and pushing to have the updates on this whole process, and I'm glad to see that, you know, as the mayor said, the process seems to change all the time, but I think, you know, there were, there was, I made a big push to do this because I thought it was important particularly to address our DEI goals. So, I have two questions. One is, I did notice that one of the applicants who's been recommended for an interview did not complete her application. And I'm a bit of a stickler, maybe because I'm a Virgo, but I think that, you know, if you want to, if you want to apply for a position, especially in the planning commission, which is one of the most preeminent boards and commissions that we have, that you should complete the application. Endeavor Basket didn't do that. Her self-assessment is incomplete, and quite frankly, for someone who has the experience she has and she brought to the table, I was a little bit disappointed in the answer she provided. And that leads me to my second question, which is, where are the rubrics? We implemented rubrics because up until this point, we did not have a formal evaluation tool. And not having a formal evaluation tool tends to make these processes less objective, and so I would request that before any final decisions are made, that those rubrics be made available to the community. I don't understand why those aren't public records. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in, let's see, I don't think we have anybody else online. Well, I can't see it because, huh? Oh, just a moment. It's got to be smarter than the technology. I don't see anybody else who is online, who has any, is that, yeah. Is there anybody here in city council chambers that has any other comment on this? And we'll go back to council comments and so forth. My understanding, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the rubrics are available, that in fact, to Ms. Most's point, there is a rubric that we have put together and for the reasons that she described, and that it was used and that the information is available. And I think we're going to be using it again as we go forward. So, that's a good piece. I guess I have a couple, well, Councilmember Fahy, do you have comments about this? We've heard mostly from others. Go ahead.
Just a couple. One, first, I want to thank our fellow council members. I think they did a wonderful job of going through this pile of applications and coming up with some really good recommendations. I was happy to see that they recommended at least an interview for every current member of an advisory board or commission. So, even if they weren't directly appointed to reposition, they will at least get the opportunity to be interviewed and possibly be reappointed. The only additional person that I would like to see interviewed is Jonathan Mahaly under the planning commission. He's very enthusiastic about applying and serving and has good qualifications as well. So, with that one addition, I would be happy to go with what you've recommended.
I was unaware of some maybe best practices in the past regarding planning commission in those interviews, so I'm open to having that conversation. I also would like to acknowledge that the, to me, in order for the process to be fair and equitable, individuals should be assessed based on the information on their application, because not every person who applied has the privilege of having someone who can show up and speak on their half or come and speak on their behalf themselves. So, I would like to encourage council to focus on the application in front of them, just to be fair and equitable to all who have applied for the positions.
Okay, thanks. A couple of comments. First, the comment of Sheri Summer, which is, I think, dead on. I think particularly this year, everybody knows that the planning commission is going to be very, very deeply involved in the comp plan. And I think it, for that reason, I think it's very important that we interview everybody who applied, or everybody who is on the list, both whether they appeared on the first part of the list or later, plus Jennifer Hunt, and plus Julia Williams. I think that was a comment.
I think it's Julie Klein who went to Williams.
Julie Klein. Okay, sorry, got the name wrong, but the person to whom Mr. Cooperman referred. So, that's one piece, I think. Another is, I'd like to do the same with the sustainability advisory board. So, the two who are listed at least recommended not to interview, I'd like to put them on, because we've had some really good discussions in the past, a couple of years regarding those folks too, and there's been a lot of discussion this last year on sustainability. It would be very good to interview those folks. That's additional work for us. I just don't, I think that's, it's all to the good that we do that. Those would be the only changes, well, and I guess the one person that didn't appear, there's another person that I would recommend, I think Mr. Mahaly would be good. Mr. Mahaly, which is the one that you had suggested, yeah, for planning commission. We'd put him on the list for interviewing as well. To speak to Councilmember Hamilton's point, that's, it's a very interesting question about whether you just rely on the application itself or anything else. I disagree, and pretty strongly, actually, but I'll tell you why. A number of these committees and boards contain people who are being, who have applied to be reappointed. Not to take into consideration their service and what they bring, I think, is, to me, a problem. I think we on council, not everybody, because you all relatively new to council, and some of us are a little bit older, not older, more experienced hands with this, and have seen people, for example, in planning commission. We have read their minutes. We have read their comments for years, in some cases. And while Councilmember, or Ms. Most is on the line, I think, you know, there's definitely a, if you will, kind of a bias in favor of incumbency when somebody's served on it before. But I think at the same time, that's a decision for us to make. I'm going to draw an analogy which probably will elicit groans from everybody and maybe Councilmember Hefner most of all. But I think of this in terms of evidence in court, admissibility versus weight. I think it's the kind of evidence, the evidence of past conduct and past performance is something that ought to be admitted, but how much we weight it in the process, I think, is something that's going to be worthwhile to discuss. And it may come a time when we do make these decisions, we have a public hearing on that, where people say, yeah, it's great, this person has been doing this for a whole long time, you shouldn't weight it, that great. And here's a person who's never, you know, who's maybe new to the community, and boy, they don't have much of a presence at all, but they have a great application, they did a great interview or whatever. We ought to weight that all very heavily. So, I think that's the reason. It's not, I'm not antagonistic. It's more explaining why I think we do have to look beyond the application, because we've got people in these positions who've worked really hard, and, you know, it deserves some weight, whatever that is, is going to be up to each individual council member to discuss. So, that's, it's more of a, this is more of a conversation we probably can have as we get further into the process, but I think it's not a bad discussion to have right now. Do you have some thoughts? Yeah, please.
Welcome the opportunity to clarify some of my comments. So, as far as evidence, the evidence, using the analogy extending it, that I used to review these applications, was the evidence that was submitted in the application available in the packet for everyone to review, both on city council and in the public. As far as taking into consideration the service of current board members, I want to be very direct in my appreciation for them serving on the board right now. Thank you for that. My comment was more to the fact that they have the opportunity to share with me what their performance has been like and why they should remain on the board by submitting the evidence in their application. And so, again, I want to thank them for participating, and if anything, because you serve on the board, you know what's happening, so in your application, if you write a complete and thorough and thoughtful application, it should be ranked highly because you're on the board, right? So, you are already taken into consideration that you're serving right now. So, I think we can kindly agree to disagree on this, and I'm happy to move forward from that unless anyone else has anything to add on the topic.
I just want to make sure I understand your recommendation for the two you want to change. So, for planning commission, it would be interviewing everybody that's currently either on the reappoint or interview recommendation list, plus adding the two that you named?
I think that's right. There's three, I think, that we named.
Three to add?
I think.
Yeah, it would be Klein, Hunt, and Mahaly.
Yeah. And then, the other part would be to interview the two that you all had listed as recommended for not interviewing, but just pointing, and my recommendation on that is to interview both of them as well.
I'm agreeable to that.
Okay. Do we need a motion? No. I think we've, does everybody have, I guess it's, you, city clerk, who have the direction there. And just so people know, that it used to not be a public setting in which we did these interviews. Was it always? Well, let's put it this way, we didn't have many people show up. Last few years, we've had more people show up, and that's fine. That doesn't mean, just to be clear, people showing up doesn't mean that they participate in the interviews, they can witness the interviews, and they certainly can, if you have questions you think are worthy of asking the candidates. We need to be asking each one the same questions for reasons of kind of due process, but those questions are being put together by the same two who've done the initial work, and I'm sure they wouldn't mind looking through some additional questions as they're preparing those. What is the date again for our interviews?
Interviews will be Monday, December 12th, and Tuesday, December 13th.
And based on-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. Monday, December 11th, and Tuesday, December 12th.
Based on the numbers that we've changed, can we do that in two nights?
Yep.
Okay. And we're starting at 5:00 PM on each night?
Starts at 5:00 o'clock, there'll be a break for dinner in there as well.
You gonna serve us dinner?
Not me, not me personally, no.
Is there going to be nourishment?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. With that, I think we're ready to move on to?
Are we good, sorry, are we good on sustainability as well? I think you had, I want to make sure we're on the same page on that one too.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Awesome. Yeah, so it would be everybody you recommended for interviewing, but also interviewing the two you recommended for appointing.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yep.
Everybody know what we're, the direction is? Okay, good. City attorney's report.
Thank you, mayor, I have no report.
Okay. Council comments, committee reports, identification of future agenda items. Anybody? Yes. Go ahead, council member Hamilton.
I would like to take the opportunity to thank everyone who is involved in the parade lights. It is one of the activities that my family absolutely loves. I get teary-eyed seeing the community all together. My tears, most years freeze, this year fortunately they did not. Because it is just one of the many examples of why many of us choose to live here, and it is a really special event that I think is worth acknowledging. So the list is long for those who were involved. I'm not gonna list out every individual name, but just overall gratitude for that.
I want to add to that, I want to thank Santa. I got to ride in the bucket truck with Santa this year, which was a really cool opportunity because I got to see, council member Hamilton, what you got to see, except I got to see the whole crowd from up above. And I do not remember seeing that many smiles per square inch in Lewisville ever. It really was a treat. And you could tell, I mean, this was just quintessentially the, the kind of event that kind of demonstrates who we are as a community, a lot of connection there. You know, we, it was funny because Santa wished Merry Christmas to people, and adults just turned around, just like the kids, and responded to it. It was, it was quite remarkable, actually, but a lot of fun. I, my hands were pretty cold by the end of it, so I don't think, I had any tears that night, nor did they stick to my face, but man, my hands are cold. But I think that's, it's a wonderful event, and I think there are a lot of people to thank. Avista, I think, was one of the big sponsors, and the chamber did a really nice job of encouraging more floats. So I understand there were like 10 more floats this year than last year. It was really long. So anyway, I, I think it was, it was great. One of the, one of the things a resident told me, and I'll have to share this, is we need to have more fun in Lewisville. We just need to have more fun. And perhaps this goes with a little bit of what Ms. Summers was saying a little bit ago. We've had a lot of really serious things in the last few years. The flood, and the fire, and the, you know, the pandemic, and it goes on. And we've had big controversies. And trying to get back a little bit of some of the things that have always tied us together, I think is a big deal. And, you know, I, I think other people feel that way too, or at least I hope they do. And this is just part of it, but I, I think you're right. I think it was just wonderful. The only other thing that I would mention is that we had, this is just an item for future consideration, perhaps, in the past, we, and it's, you know, completely different than the rest. I believe the, the, is it the Building Code Board of Appeals, I believe? I think that's right. That, I think they put together a, an analysis of the energy code. Is that, am I thinking of the right board, or is it a different one? Okay. And I know that one of the things that I heard from that board, a number of people on that board, was gee, that was a part of what they thought was, what the board did, was to make comments when we do a new energy code. And it is, it turns out that it's not, because I talked to the city attorney about that, and that actually isn't a part of their ordinance. And I wanted to propose that it be that way. Part of it is because I think the people on that committee would not necessarily re-up unless they have that opportunity. And so my suggestion is that we amend that ordinance, and so, or at least consider amending it down the road. Yeah. Yeah, sure, absolutely. Well, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
Not for us.
That we talk about it at some point down the road. This is just items for, you're right. It's on the agenda, we can talk about it down the road. Are there other items? We're adjourned. Thank you all.